Good evening. I'd like to call to order Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, starting at 7:00 PM. We will start with roll call. Member Downey?
Present.
Member Eng?
Present.
Member McCallum?
Yeah.
Member Joyce, present. And Chairman Harnes will be joining us later in the meeting. Do you want to start with?
Yes.
Do you want to start with public?
Madam Chair, if I may, very briefly. We do have quite a few continuances this evening. Obviously, we can't continue the hearings out until 7:15. But before we get to that matter, if the Board could entertain the 65 Colby Road as-built approval. I believe you have a staff report. Connor had assisted us and worked on this one. This was the residential home for Mr. and Mrs. Campanelli. They finished the home. They finished all the grading. And the staff, at this point, is recommending as-built approval with the conditions noted on the staff report, which I forgot to make a copy for myself. But you all have it in your packet. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Downey, do you have any questions or comments regarding 65 Colby Road grading permit?
No, I do not.
Okay. Member Eng, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
I just asked the staff. This was a very large project, Melissa.
Yes, it was.
Everything was done to order?
Yeah, they removed. They ended up removing. I don't know if the Board remembers. They had a retaining wall in the front, and they ended up, they were going to replace it, and they ended up just removing it. And then Andrea Garvey, the Campanelli's daughter, had asked me to come out to the property early on in the project to look at some trees that they did not anticipate that were going to have to come down. And basically, because an additional one had to come down, we agreed on keeping another one up. So, really good project, working along. They made some changes to some of the features that they were going to have in the backyard, but the grading is all in place and stabilized. And the dwelling has come out really nice. The only thing that isn't completed is the final coat of pavement on the driveway, but the drainage structures are in. They were silted up a little bit, and they've been cleaned out. Connor went back out and took a look at those. So I don't feel a need to hold it up, really, for the top coat. But they did a great project and a great group to work with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum.
Madam Chairman.
Okay. I do not have any further questions or comments. So we need to have a motion to accept the as-built approval?
Yep. And also, if we could release, we're holding a couple different sureties. One, they wanted a CO when some of the landscaping wasn't done in the as-built plan. So we do have two sureties. We're holding, I think it was about, yeah, so we're holding about $22,000 that can be released at this point.
Okay. So Cheryl, entertain a motion to accept as-built approval and to release the sureties.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, again, under old business, new business, there's a request for a release of surety from the Riverwalk Development LLC. And I see the, Mr. Clemens is here, who's the manager. This is the condo conversion project over at the Elks. And Mr. Clemens has finished up the units, finished up the drainage, finished grades, and he just has some landscaping work remaining that needs to be done. So he's asked for some of the surety to be released. And I had spoke to him. We went out there today and looked, and the staff is recommending that we retain $24,500, which will cover the as-built sureties, the remaining landscape items, as well as some site cleanup. And staff's recommending to release the money, $9,200 that we were holding for granite curbing, pavement top coat, and then the grass crate. The math doesn't exactly work out, and that's because Mr. Clemens was advancing on the certificates of occupancy, but some of the site work was already completed. And I had said to him, we can shift around the money, and then when it comes time for the release, we'll reflect it that way in the record.
The CO was issued?
I think he has COs for all of them except for one.
Yeah. What's the only one that's not issued?
I would have to default to Mr. Clemens if he could come up to. That was unit 11.
Mr. Clemens, why isn't number 11 have a CO?
Why does it not have a CO?
Right.
I just haven't decided to finish it off yet.
It's not finished yet?
No, it's finished off. I just haven't received the sign-off from the Building Department.
Okay. So you're just waiting to clean that up?
Yeah, it's on the market. I generally get the COs right before I close.
All right. So you're still retaining $24,000 for surety on that?
Yep. And every individual unit, including the one without the CO, we're holding the required as-built surety. So we're holding, it's a thousand per unit. So we're holding 12, which covers the entire site. That way, we don't release, and then George has to bring a check for $1,000 next week or something like that.
Okay. What's the schedule for finishing the remaining work, sir?
Really, the only remaining work is the final landscaping. So in the spring, once it's planting season, we'll get that finished off.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Oh, we have one more question. Sorry.
Yeah, if I could just ask, how are the sales going, Mr. Clemens?
Brisk.
Brisk?
Yeah, we have one unit remaining, which I may end up keeping, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, sold very fast. We did very well.
Good for you.
Yeah, it was a nice project.
Okay. And I know there was going to be a lot of work done in the back. Is that part of the work that remains undone?
So that's a multi-year process through the conservation. We have additional collateral with the conservation to satisfy that the work's completed. But it's been treated. Majority of the work's done. It's really, the spring would be more of the planting. But the restoration of that riverfront is well underway, should be completed by fall of next year.
Okay. And any issues with the traffic? You know, I know that whole stretch there, you have your neighbors and the apartment buildings there, but any?
You know, I guess it's not much different from any other area. During your peak hours, you do have some traffic. It's a busy street. There's no way around it. But I think circulation worked, and I think the design actually worked out well, one-way entrance.
One-way in and one-way out.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, none of the owners have complained, so it seems to be working.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Member Downey, do you have any additional comments or questions?
None.
I also do not have any comments or questions. Cheryl, entertain a motion to release the surety for file 1516 Riverwalk Development as laid out by staff.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair, if I may, quickly, just for those folks that are here this evening and those individuals at home, there are two other items listed under new business, old business. We have an as-built approval for 501-555 John Maher Highway. Staff's requesting that be tabled to January. And spoke to Representative FX Messina today about that. And then also, the matter for Independence Avenue also be tabled to January. So those items will not be discussed this evening. This might be a good opportunity to do the zoning.
Zoning, yep.
Yep.
All right. So as we've done in the past for zoning, for the December zoning board of appeal petitions in the past, the Board has taken up the recommendations of staff and passed that forward as part of our process. If there are no objections, Cheryl, entertain a motion to move forward the December zoning board of appeal petitions with recommendations from staff as our recommendation. Second?
I have a question, Madam Chairman. These petitions, when they list the old business, does that mean they're totally been moved forward? Because I see four old ones and I see three new ones. Is that, Melissa, is that correct? The four is, they're done deals?
If I may, through the chair, no, they're actually continued membering, which means they'll be further discussed at the next zoning board meeting.
Okay. I just didn't see any action recommended. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
So, second that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So can move to open up the public hearing?
So, Madam Chair, at this point, because it is 7:15, if you would like, with your permission, I can run through the hearings that will be continued. We can get those continued and out of the way, and then we can get into the matter that the Board is actually going to be deliberating this evening. So I'll start with 639 Washington Street, which is Bonny Tan. We received an email today from Attorney Phelan requesting that the matter be continued. There's been issue raised with conflicts from some of the board members, and he would like to understand that and sort of see how that's going to have implications for his project. And we will discuss with him his options to or not to move forward. So that is, staff is recommending, we have our January meeting, membering won't be here. Whatever the Board wants to do, if they want to continue it to January, I think we should go with that, and then we'll at least have resolution. If this is something that is going to be moving forward, we can deal with it at that time, given the absence.
Okay.
Will he still be able to vote? If he misses January?
No.
Can't vote?
Well, he can watch the tape and get up to speed.
And then vote?
Do we have to vote on the continuance?
Please. Yep, staff is recommending January 9th at 7:15, 2018.
Do you need a motion?
January 9th, Melissa?
Yeah, January 9th. Is that not the meeting?
Okay.
Let me double-check. I think that's the meeting date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on for one second. Let me just double-check. That didn't sound right, Darrell. Second Tuesday, yeah, January 9th. It just seems early in the month, but yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, there was a second on the motion to continue 639 Washington Street to January 9th. So all those in favor?
Aye.
The second matter that is not going to be going forward this evening is 290 Wood Road, the remand for the billboards, application 1508. I'll default to Director Stickney for an update on the continuance.
So they've asked for a continuance as well. The peer review just came back. There's some missing material. So they would like to go to January 9th at 7:15 as well.
Cheryl, entertain a motion to move the 290 Wood Road billboard remand to the January 9th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The third matter that will be continued this evening is 236-240 Wood Road billboard application 1712.
We just received the funds for the peer review. That's been initiated, and they too are asking for January 9th, 2018, 7:15.
Okay. Cheryl, entertain a motion to move the 236 to 240 Wood Road special permit site plan review for Logan Communications to the January 9th meeting at 7:15.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Christine. Christine, will the peer review be in, in time for review before that board meeting?
I've asked them to have it.
Okay, so there's a chance that it may not be done?
There's a chance it could be, yeah. And so, as you know, you're going to be absent that January meeting. We do have the passage of the Mullen Rule that now allows you to view the video if you want. It's continued.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to continue this to the January 9th meeting?
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we going in order?
Yep.
The next matter that will be continued is the Peterson Pool application at 128 Town Street, application 1519. And again, Director Stickney for an update.
I don't see Attorney Lacy here. The mayor's office has asked for a continuance to January 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Cheryl, entertain a motion to continue the matter for 128 Town Street to January 23rd meeting at 7:15.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last matter that will be continued, Madam Chair, is the zoning article relative to recreational marijuana. However, this is a new public hearing, so we need to open the hearing, excuse me, Member McCallum, before we make the continuance.
All right. I just have to read this, then, right? The Braintree Planning Board hereby gives notice pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Sections 5 and 11, and under Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 15, that a public hearing shall be conducted on Wednesday, December 13th, 2017, at 7:15 PM at the Braintree Town Hall, 1 JFK Memorial Drive. The purpose of said hearing is to review and provide a recommendation to the Braintree Town Council on Order Number 17-055. The order proposes amendments to the Town's general ordinance, Chapter 5.6, non-zoning amendment, amendment of zoning bylaw ordinance, Article 17, and adopt a new Article 18, regulation of non-medical marijuana establishments. The overall objective is to prohibit the retail sale of marijuana within the town of Braintree and impose a one-year moratorium on other uses recreational marijuana establishments until December 31st, 2018, until such a time the town of Braintree can address implementation. The proposed zoning amendment with text under ordinance 17-055 is on file with the Braintree Town Clerk and can also be reviewed in the Office of the Development of Planning and Community Development located at 1 JFK Memorial Drive in Braintree, Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM until 4:30 PM.
So this particular matter is still before, the council is working on it as well as the mayor's office, and so a continuance has been asked for January 9th.
Okay. So Cheryl, entertain a motion to continue this matter until the January 9th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, if I may, so getting back to the agenda and the items that will be going forward this evening, and recognizing that Chairman Harnes will be arriving late, we have three public hearings. The first one listed on the agenda is 250 Granite Street, application 1714. And if you could have the applicant come up to the podium, I just want to give them the information about the quorum and the members, and then give them an opportunity to wait for Chairman Harnes or to go forward.
Okay. So if the applicant is here for 250 Granite Street, just make sure that you speak into the mic so we can record you. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
So before you get started, I just want to just give a little bit of background here with the situation with the planning board. So the planning board is a five-member board, and you're here for a special permit site plan review application. And you need four people to vote in favor of the application for it to go forward. So there's four members sitting here now. You can choose to make your presentation and have these four individuals act on the application, or you can wait till Chairman Harnes arrives, and you can have the ability to present in front of the full board.
This is fine.
This is fine. Okay, great. Do I have to read the?
Oh, yes, I do.
So we will open up the public hearing. Chairman won't read the notice, excuse me, Member McCallum? And I know Ms. Alves has some materials that she would like to share with the board as well, so she'll be handing those out.
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11, and the Braintree zoning bylaw, Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 7, and 8, that a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, December 13th, 2017, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider a use special permit and site plan review by the applicant, Jennifer Alves. The applicant is seeking permission to operate a body art establishment in a portion of a 1,491 square foot space, store location 2070 at the South Shore Plaza. The new establishment, to be known as Eyebrow Glam, will offer several eyebrow services, including eyebrow microblading. This property is 112 acres, has an address of 250 Granite Street, is zoned highway business, and is identified on the Sessors Plan 2089 as Plot 22. The proposal may be reviewed at the Department of Planning and Community Development at Town Hall at 1 JFK Memorial Drive, Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. So Ms. Alves, if you would like to give us a presentation on your business and the application itself, you're more than welcome to do that now.
Okay. So I'd like to propose my business plan, which is what you briefly just stated, Eyebrow Glam. Eyebrow Glam will be a salon/spa that'll be focused on eyebrows. And one of the services that we are offering is microblading, which is a semi-permanent micropigmentation of the skin. What microblading is, it's we basically, we tattoo hair-like strokes into the skin that gives it the full appearance of eyebrows. This procedure, and the procedure that we use is good for people who have no hair or little to none. It also serves for individuals who suffer skin diseases such as alopecia and cancer patients as well. It's highly recommended. A lot of people are looking into it. It's a new trend, and it's something that I feel like would be, you know, good for the area. There's none around that I've seen. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Because this is a public hearing, I will ask if anybody from the public has any questions or comments regarding this application to please come forward. Seeing no members of the public here to ask questions, I'll open it up to the board. Member Downey, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. The process you do is like, you said it was like a tattoo, is it? Did I hear you correctly?
It's a semi-permanent tattoo. So it's like a tattoo, but it's not permanent.
Okay.
It lasts up to two years.
And do you need a special license for that? Do you need any kind of accreditation or training?
Yes, so I have been accredited, and I've gotten all certifications and training that are required by the Board of Health to proceed with this, to offer this procedure.
And what's the training? What kind of?
So I had to, I had to do an apprentice at a tattoo parlor, as well as attend a school to learn how to master the craft of microblading. And then there's levels to pass, and then once you pass, you're allowed to perform the procedure.
And are there other businesses like this in other locations, or?
Yes, there's businesses in Boston, other surrounding areas around Braintree, but I don't think in Braintree there are any yet.
Any within a, because you're going to be in an existing store, right?
I'm going to be, yes, in the Braintree Mall.
Yeah. Any like that, setup like that that you know of?
Not in the Braintree Mall. No, not there.
Oh, anywhere else, though?
There are some in Boston. There's on Newbury Street. There's some in Worcester. I believe in Westwood as well.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Member Eng, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. In your customer profile statement, you say that your customers are ages between 15 and 65. So you're not accepting anybody under 15 or over 65? Is that correct?
No, we accept all ages. Actually, we don't accept after 18. If they're younger than 18, they need a parent's consent. But we can perform this art on anyone of any age.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking is, can a 12-year-old come to your place and ask for some work done?
No.
Okay.
No. If they're 12 years old, they would need a parent with them. And we don't recommend it for children at that age, unless it's, you know, really necessary. But no, it's 18 and older.
18 and older?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm reading your customer profile, and because it says between the ages of 15 and 65. So also, you know, if somebody over 65 can come to your place and ask for some?
Yeah, over 65, that's totally fine. With 15, that must have been a typo. Sorry about that. It's definitely 18 or older.
My last question is this. The material you're using at your store, at your place, are there any hazardous material that comes as a byproduct of what you're using to do your treatment?
We do use needles. They are all disposable. And we also use, the only other thing that we use is the pigment, which is FDA-approved, but nothing that's hazardous. I mean, the needles, we already connected with a waste management company that will be coming every week to dispose of the materials properly. Which is the hand tools, which has the needles on it.
Okay. Do you also have to get a license from our health department?
Yes. I am aware of that.
And you don't have a problem getting that license to, or permit to proceed with your business?
Did I have a problem, you stated?
Yeah.
No, I actually have another meeting tomorrow. But so far, they said everything's been fine.
Okay. All right. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Member McCallum, any questions or comments?
Sure, thank you. Hi, Ms. Alves. I see here you're going to provide basically a full range of services, and the one that we're focused on is the one, you know, the controversial one. That's what you have to get the special permit for.
Yes.
Okay. And are there other companies at the Plaza that do this type of work?
No, not that I know of.
Okay, nobody else. All right.
Just for a point of information, there's nobody in Braintree. That does this.
Okay, thank you. And was the Plaza receptive to having you come? I mean, they obviously approved it.
Yes, they are. They're actually waiting for me to come right in.
Well, they're tough, that's why.
They're waiting for the process. They're waiting for the process to be done, yeah.
Okay. So as Member Ang mentioned, I know you're gonna have some, the Board of Health will have more jurisdiction than we will, and you're gonna have four employees?
Yes.
Okay. And the only other thing I'll mention is, I noticed in your presentation that, you know, the possible exposure to hepatitis B, and how much of a risk is that?
Well, I mean, anything that has exposure to blood, you have that exposure to hepatitis B. So, you know, we're gonna take all precautions and be very careful. There's a consent form that all clients have to fill out prior to the procedure, so we make sure they sign that and go over it thoroughly, and we also ask them prior to their procedure if they're clear, and that's when we proceed.
Okay, so they have to sign?
Yeah.
And I also noticed here, are you going to require your employees to get vaccinated?
Yes, definitely.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, so that's important. Great, I don't see anything else. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Sure. If I may just, if I can ask staff just to kind of give an overview of where they're at and any additional comments that are relevant?
Yes, Madam Chair. So just a little bit of a quick background of four-one-one. Myself and Mary Beth McGrath in the municipal licensing department have been working with Ms. Alves from the beginning, going over the requirements. She's been working very closely with the Health Department and has submitted a variety of materials to them. She has also engaged an architect that has prepared a very nice floor plan and layout that we have here for the board, and the staff has, it's a special permit and site plan review because all the special permits require a site plan review, but in this particular case, as noted in the draft conditions and findings, it's out the South Shore Plaza. So the site review aspects are really handled in application and decision oh-eight oh-three. And this particular application here will not affect parking, will not affect traffic, will not have really any exterior impact whatsoever to the mall, it's simply tenant, tenant improvements. So a lot of the items and things that we would be talking about in this context are really, there's really no need to discuss them because their existing conditions regulated by a separate special permit. And lastly, I just wanna, I wanna say, this isn't an easy process, and Ms. Alves has been very great to work with. She was very nervous when she first came to us in the beginning, and she's done a really good job at providing materials and narrative in her application. Everything has been forthcoming and really no questions or concerns. Like I said, I have prepared the draft findings and conditions, and to just be clear, this particular activity of the microblading does require the body art special permit. It falls under our body art and tattooing category in the zoning bylaw, and that, the decision, and the draft decision and the conditions are really catered to what Ms. Alves has presented, and that is the microblading. So if this was going to expand into some other type of body art establishment, they would need to return to the board and seek a modification. So she's been very clear and upfront about what she wants to do. It's basically all eyebrows. It sounds pretty wonderful, all different services for men and women, and I think this will be a nice addition to the community. It seems to be very popular. We've probably gotten about five or six phone calls about this particular use from various people, but Jennifer pursued the process and the application, and with this board's permission, she'll be, she'll be on her way. So thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Do we have to accept correspondence before?
Yes, we have prepared a correspondence list, just listing all the items. We updated it today with the revised floor plan that was submitted.
So Chair, entertain a motion to accept correspondence through today, the thirteenth, into the record?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And has the applicant been given the draft conditions that you wrote?
They have. I haven't, I don't know if she has any questions or concerns about them.
Have you had a chance to review the draft conditions, and do you have any questions or comments regarding them?
No questions, I don't know.
Okay. I guess Chair, entertain a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to move special permit for approval, one thirty-five dash six oh-one, for this application at two fifty Granite Street for Jennifer Alves, for her business.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're all set?
Thank you.
I'll be in touch about paperwork and stuff later this week. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, if I may, we have two public hearings left. One is the Sports Complex up at, off of Washington Street and Braxton Street. The applicants are here, just confirming that they are waiting for the full membership of the board to go forward. And then the second hearing that is going to be discussed this evening is thirty-six Bramblewood, and seeing that applicant, he was here, they're also going to be, I'm assuming, waiting for the, Member Ang is not eligible to participate, so I think that they'll be waiting for, if I could excuse myself and just see if Mr. Hardy was here. He might have gone off.
I was only concerned with the last time, the height of the wall, but from the height of the wall, it's okay. They put a drainage thing right in the middle of it.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Levin, the attorney for thirty-six Bramblewood, has indicated he would like to wait for Mr. Hanez's arrival.
Okay, so we'll take a short, a short recess?
Yes, we can take a break.
All right. All right, we will take a short recess.
Yep.
How about approving the?
We are going to come back to discuss the application for Thayer Athletic Fields, file number seventeen thirteen. We just received word that Chairman Hanez is going to be a little bit later than expected, so we do have the Mullen Rule in effect, so he will be able to listen to the meeting and review the information and participate in upcoming hearings. So if that's all right with you, we can open up the hearing.
Great, thank you for having us tonight.
Oh, I'm just gonna read into, sorry. Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of MGL Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven, and the Braintree zoning bylaw, Chapter one thirty-five, Articles five, six, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, and fourteen, that a public hearing will be conducted on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven fifteen PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider special permits six oh-one and six oh-nine, and a site plan review application by the applicant Edge Sports Group, who is proposing to construct an eighty-nine thousand square foot indoor commercial recreation facility that contains ice and turf surfaces. The project also includes associated paving, utility landscaping, lighting, and parking improvements. These development properties in total equal fourteen plus or minus acres, are located off of Washington slash Braxton Street, and include a portion of the discontinued Washington Street layout known as the Thayer Athletic Fields. Are zoned highway business and residence B and are within the watershed overlay protection district, and are identified on assessors' plan slash plot one zero five three slash twelve H and one zero five zero slash fourteen. The proposal may be reviewed at the Department of Planning and Community Development in Town Hall at One JFK Memorial Drive, Monday through Friday, eight thirty AM to four thirty With that, I will allow the applicant to introduce the project and give a presentation.
Great. Thank you. For the record, my name is Brian DeVales, I'm the president of ESG, ESG Associates, Edge Sports Group. We were before you last month, I believe, to seek a zone change on this or your approval to recommend to the council, which will be coming up in a few weeks in January. I wanted to give a little bit of brief history on who we are. I think you guys have had some experience with sports centers or proposed sports centers. Tell you about our project, and then Phil and MDM Transportation will talk a little bit about the site engineering, the drainage, and the traffic. I handed to Melissa, if it's okay, I'll hand out hard copies. I emailed Melissa earlier today at her request.
Thank you.
Just a little bit about our company. We are, we are a young company, about twenty years in the making, specializing in sports development, design, permit, build, and operation, starting with golf courses. We opened our first indoor facility in Bedford, the Edge Sports Center, in two thousand and eight. Expanded that in two thousand and twelve to add a second sheet of ice, two outdoor fields, and synthetic air structure. Two thousand and sixteen, we opened up the Essex Sports Center in Middleton, which is two ice rinks, about twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, and a turf field. This past September, we opened up and managed the Worcester Ice Center in Worcester, which is two rinks and about twenty-five thousand feet of retail. And weather on our side, this Friday, we'll break round in Wellesley, Mass. on a hundred and thirty thousand square foot, two rink, two pools, turf, strength training, physical therapy in store. This project has been about six months in the making. We met with Thayer Academy at the request of a mutual associate who was desirous to turn three of their athletic fields on the south campus into a hockey rink. And as part of that, we're gonna add an indoor turf facility, a second rink, which we call a half a rink, but is really about a third of a rink, for small three-on-three play and goalie skills. In addition to that, will be ancillary space for Thayer Academy on a mezzanine overlooking the rink and turf for functions, overlooking the games that'll happen. We're also gonna leave on the site, on the three, on the three-field site, remaining land for tennis courts, which will be built out between the existing field to remain in the development. So Phil Gordero's been with me for, this is our fourth project together. He can go through a little bit about the drainage, the traffic, the parking, all the stuff that you should wanna really be concerned about. The nice thing with us is, we have a existing signal at Braxton and Washington Street, and then MDM can get into really the timing and the turn radius, all that stuff that I would pretend to understand, but I really don't. I can do enough to get me in trouble, so they're here to answer those questions. So with that, if it's okay, I'll let Phil kind of walk you through the details of the plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. For the record, Phil Gordero from Allen and Major Associates, civil site engineers on the project. So we're happy to present this project here with you this evening. You may recall, as Brian mentioned, we met a few weeks ago requesting the zoning change for this parcel. This board may recall that there was split zoning on the thirteen acres, half of it was for commercial, half of it was for residential. Because of the nature of the project and the shared use of parking, we wanted to make sure that the entirety of that, this land is commercial, hence our request. So with a favorable recommendation from the board, this has proceeded and is going to town council, zoning council, and we'll, we'll get a decision hopefully in January. So with that in mind, everything that I'm going to discuss and present is under the presumption that the zoning change is approved. I think it is favorable in the town, and it's a beneficial project, but, you know, we're assuming that it is all one contiguous zoning now for the purposes of development. As Brian mentioned, just to give some additional background, it is the thirteen-acre parcel as outlined in a legal ad. There are four existing fields in use on the property, one, two, three, four, one vertical and three horizontal, just behind fifteen fifteen Washington, the Flatley Commercial Building and their parking field, and three of those fields are being converted in this process. So the fourth field is going to remain the vertical, the vertical field. So the vertical field will remain upon completion of this construction. So for frame of reference for the planning board, before we get into the specifics of the project, the parcel does obtain its frontage along Braxton Street, which is a signalized intersection that allows travel into and out of the development, and we will continue to maintain our access through there. If you're coming in through Braxton Street, certainly you come to the main intersection at the Office Park Complex, where you're able to take a left turn, and you're presented with two parallel parking fields. At present, if you enter into the left movement, you enter again a further left movement, and there's a bay of parking along the left, left edge that is entirely on the subject property and is currently used for the, for the sports fields. We will continue that same movement onto the property as part of the development, so we wanted to factor that in. But before we got into the development, we needed to understand what the current parking scenario was in support of these four fields, so that way, as we're removing three of them, we're making sure we know that the fourth field is properly represented in terms of parking. In the existing field, we have just shy, it's about a hundred and four parking spaces. So using an average calculation of each, you know, of a hundred and four spaces divided by four, we have determined that twenty-six parking spaces is appropriate to remain for the field that is to remain, and we're factored, factored that into the development plan for the site. So what we bring in front of the planning board is a zoning compliant plan. We do seek a special permit for a skating rink in accordance with the zoning bylaw, and certainly site plan review for a development of this nature. The, the building, as discussed, will be eighty-six thousand square feet with a footprint area and a mezzanine level, and that's how we've determined our parking ratios off of, and we'll get more into that in a moment. The entry point, as referenced, will be off of Braxton Street, down the existing parking tray into the development. Now, the first part of the development that you'll notice is, we are proposing to restripe the spaces along that existing parking tray. We're gonna bring them into the, into compliance with zoning at eight and a half by, eight and a half feet wide by eighteen. Now, they are wider than that now, so there's not a non-compliance issue, but what we're trying to do is increase the number of parking spaces in support of the field to remain and the development as proposed. So this area will be restripped through there, will provide some new ADA accessible spaces, and as you're coming down through, we're also going to construct a new sidewalk that will provide an ADA compliant path to the field to remain. At present, if you're visiting this field, you'd come all the way down into the site, and the ADA compliance is, is a little iffy, so we're gonna bring that into full compliance as we come through here. When you, when you enter through the parking bay, and you get three-quarters of the way through, we will construct our dedicated entrance now into the facility. So we will have appropriate signage here directing patrons to make the left turn into the parking that will support the facility. We'll have a dedicated two-way, bidirectional ingress and egress driveway through here, certainly capable of supporting emergency vehicle circulation, trash vehicles, certainly delivery vehicles, and most importantly, our school buses and pedestrian, family vehicles that will come to the facility. As an offshoot to the entrance, we're adding ten additional parking spaces. Again, in the interest of making sure the project is zoning compliant, we've maximized the spaces throughout the property. We need three hundred and forty-five spaces to support the facility, in addition to the two, twenty-six spaces to support the field. So we have added spaces wherever we can to make sure we hit the mark in terms of compliance. Once into the site, we do have a one-direction access around the building. Once you enter the building portion, this is one-way, and it allows us to maintain a flow for vehicles coming through, dropping their children off, or school buses dropping off in the bus drop-off zone or our accessible parking field for a clean flow of traffic. The area just prior to it is two-direction, this is our main parking field, and then just after it is, again, also a bidirectional area with secondary parking around the back of the building. We will have our main entrance on the northerly side of the building, and our loading and, logistics and operational exit along the south side of the building for removal of trash, maintenance, et cetera, through here. The, the secondary drive aisle on the southerly side is bidirectional. Now, we did that to make sure we can utilize the parking to the fullest extent without creating a conflict with all the vehicles that are coming in and will be targeting, dropping everybody off at the front door. So we feel there's, there's certainly a good flow in terms of circulation. The plan that we have, the development area, is about five-point-three acres, and again, it's the least area out of the thirteen plus or minus acres that exist on the entirety of the property, with the least premised area being approximately here. We have left accommodations for, for future tennis courts, and those will be sandwiched between the existing field to remain and our parking field and the building. The plan as presented currently The plan as presented currently conforms with all front, side, rear yard setbacks. It also conforms with lot coverages, of which the maximum allowed in the commercial zone is 75%. Because of the open space nature on the majority of the field, we're at 42% coverage with this project in place. So we're able to, again, stand here and assert that we have zoning compliance here. We're not requesting any relief from the bylaw. However, that having been said, there is an element I want to discuss with the board and determine whether it's something we can pursue. The parking that we have is zoning compliant. We've maxed this out. In order to do that, we've created some offshoot parking off of the main entrance, but we're also extending the development build area in a westerly direction, which starts to encroach upon Cranberry Brook. And those familiar with the area may recall that there's a riprap slope that exists off the westerly part of the field. What we'd look to do is remove that westerly slope, the riprap slope, extend the parking field, and support that with a retaining wall. It has necessitated a filing with the Conservation Commission. I met with them last week with the applicant, and what it does is we protrude closer into an environmental resource area, the riverfront buffer to Cranberry Brook. So in order to be zoning compliant, we've filed for that extension with the Conservation Commission. One of the elements we wanted to discuss with the planning board is, given the nature of the facility and the operational aspects of it, we do believe, and Dan Mills from MDM will talk about parking demand shortly, that full compliance with zoning in terms of parking spaces will require, will result in an excess of spaces that we really don't need here. So one of the things we'd like to entertain with the board is identifying reserve areas, areas that we can certainly build to be in compliance with zoning, but not necessarily build at the onset of the project. Allow the project to proceed, be operationally managed, and to the extent that additional spaces are required, then we would build in full conformance with the drawings as discussed here with you. That most notably would include the area, 16 parking spaces to the west of the building, and we're asking for that discussion to minimize the potential impact within the riverfront zone, which is a favorable recommendation by the Conservation Commission. Now, certainly, we're in discussion between two boards in town. One, we want to be zoning compliant and make sure we can check all the boxes. The other, we want to be environmentally conscientious about what the project entails. So I'd like to have that discussion with the board, you know, as we progress here this evening. The next elements that we have to go through, apart from zoning compliance and our layout, is I want to discuss the infrastructure for the facility. As the board can imagine, we have four existing sports fields out there, which, for the purposes of stormwater management, everything drains through the artificial turf field, where there's a liner underneath and there's an underdrain collection system. That underdrain collection system then flows to existing onsite detention basins and a detention basin here in the west. So there is little runoff from the site. As part of any development that introduces impervious surface, a building, a parking lot, we're required to mitigate that increase in runoff. So the way we're proposing to do this, and we're reviewing it with staff currently through both planning and conservation, is we have a series of closed drainage catch basins located throughout the site. They'll certainly be located at low points. The site is generally flat, as you can imagine, because it is athletic fields. So we'll create some artificial elevation ups and downs to create adequate pitch for stormwater. We'll collect those in deep sump hooded catch basins, which provide required treatment under the stormwater standards. We're going to route those through subsurface collection, retention, and infiltration fields. Now, in those fields, we'll provide several elements. One is treatment of the stormwater for removal of pollutants, total suspended solids, which is required under stormwater standards. Then we'll have a series of chambers that will promote the recharge of stormwater back to the ground to compensate for the increase in additional impervious area created by this project. And then the third series will be additional chambers that will basically be storage compartments. They will hold the water and allow for the slow release of it back to the natural design water course, which is to the west towards Cranberry Brook. Now, the plan as proposed and under the application provides for an outfall, a direct outfall, to the west of all of the subsurface fields. And this certainly meets all of the standards, and we meet all of the pre-imposed development values on that design. Through correspondence with the Conservation Commission and some recommendations by staff, they have suggested that we continue to use the existing onsite detention basin that is out there now. It retrieves the underdrains from the sports field, controls the water, and then releases it back to the brook. They've suggested we go ahead and continue to reuse that. So as part of our revision through the Conservation Commission, and ultimately a revision through the planning board for final plans, we're going to change our outfall configuration to now use that basin. What it will allow us to do is minimize work within the environmental resource areas, use areas that are already fully stabilized, constructed, and are accepted by the Conservation Commission, and really result in a more desirable project from that aspect. But rather than create a new outfall, we'll just use the one that's already there. We're providing, we'll check all the boxes. We can go through the particulars on the numbers if you'd like, as supported. We're required to recharge back to groundwater, a ratio of .25 inches over the new impervious surface, and we are providing that. We're providing several thousand cubic feet of subsurface storage for recharge, and then the retainer, the remainder is discharged to the west. So a fully compliant stormwater management system. We provide an operation and maintenance plan that is integrated into the notice of intent through conservation that the owner and the operator of the facility is required to follow. That'll include routine cleaning of the paved surface, routine cleaning of the catch basins, routine cleaning of the subsurface fields, and the treatment elements, and retaining those records onsite should they be requested by any member of the town or the Conservation Commission to make sure that we're doing our job. So there are very specific requirements to that end that will be factored into the Further utility-wise, infrastructure-wise, it's very utilitarian. Electric service, gas service, water, and sanitary sewer, we have all those elements already on the property. In fact, the property is very encumbered by a major sewer easement along the southerly line. There's a deep MWRA sewer transmission line through there, and we also have a gas easement that crosses the property. The gas easement, shown by the dash line here that traverses the plan left to right, and the sewer easement, which comes down and then runs parallel, effectively wrote the story as to where the building needs to sit on the property. Now, that's an important element for the conservation folks, because they wanted everything pushed as far away as possible, but because we can't put a structure inside a permanent easement, we needed to cite it so everything remained clear. So that's what established the position of the building, and then the parking was dictated around it. But what it does do for us in a good way is all the utilities are onsite. So we have an eight-inch water service that we're going to seek connection to, and that will ultimately result in a six-inch fire service line to the building, so it's fully sprinkled. We have fire safety suppression systems inside, and we'll have a four-inch domestic for all of the internal operations. The sewer system, we have, there's an existing stub located on the property that we'll seek to provide a connection into. Same with the electric and the gas. So we're certainly coordinating with Mr. Campbell, the town engineer, and coordinating with the folks at DPW to make sure that all of those connections are made. We've provided to him the anticipated flows. Despite the size of the facility, it's not a large generator in terms of sewage flows. Once the sheets of ice are made, we don't, you know, they don't get made and then melted, made and melted, so there's not a steady flow coming from the ice rinks. So it really just becomes locker room flow and bathroom flow, which is generally minimal for a facility of this size. So we have all of those elements accounted for, and the property can be fully supported. Other elements that are in the package for the site plan approval, certainly to make sure we're in compliance with the submission requirements, we did provide a planting plan, and that's in accordance with, and I just want to make sure we have the number, Section 135, 811, and 812 of the zoning bylaw. So we have a fairly intensive site in terms of lot coverage, you know, in this limited area. So we've created breaks in it by having end capped islands on the parking fields. We've created a break in terms of the mass, the primary parking field, so we can have planted trees. So we do have an intensive landscaping plan in the area that we'll have control over in compliance with that section of the bylaw. And we can get into the specifics on plant species if the board would like to discuss Also provided for the board's review is to make sure we have a photometric plan. And what this indicates for the board is that we will have light standards located throughout the property, with a new installation starting at the main entry point off of the parking tray. Coming into the site, we'll have light standards throughout, which will give a safe illumination throughout the entirety of the parking field. Now, these will be LED downlight shielded fixtures with cutoffs at the property line, which is what everybody's expectation here is in town, so we'll make sure we accommodate that. But the lighting levels produced by those LED fixtures, we'll make sure we have full and complete safety and circulation for pedestrians and vehicular movements through here. The average foot candle is two. The average foot candle that we typically shoot for is about one. That's safe illumination level, so we're above those minimum requirements. We want a nice, safe facility for everybody to circulate around and make sure everybody can navigate. Operationally, what we try to do on these facilities is circuit the lighting, so that way, as we start getting deeper into the night, those lights can be shut down. So we're not a Walmart parking lot all night long. Not that Walmarts are problematic, but if the lights can be dimmed, we want to find ways to shut off the lights. We can't totally darken the parking lot, certainly for safety and security reasons, but we can control, maybe it's every other fixture, maybe it's every fourth fixture, to make sure we have those light levels for safety. So we don't create these dark zones that bad things can happen in. But we do have those materials in the plan. I met with Conservation last week, as I mentioned, and we've continued our discussion there until January 4th. So over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be working with staff, with Kelly and her team, to revise the conservation plans, or the elements that would be of interest to conservation. So it would also make sure we circulate that through the planning board for any final plans, if the board so deems approval of the site. We're also committed to working with the staff, and the staff has been terrific in terms of shepherding this project with us, but we're going to coordinate with them on further review of these site plans to make sure that all of the engineering aspects are where they need to be, so that way, this is a first-class project and product for not only us on the applicant and development side, but certainly for the town, that's something that can be looked at and looked at proudly. So I think with that, what I'd like to do is stop on the civil site side. I have with me Dan Mills from MDM Transportation, who would like to discuss the transportation and traffic impacts. Alternatively, if you would like us to stop and field questions now, we could do that too. Certainly want to make sure we're, you know, open and available to the board in whatever way favors, you know, your operations, so.
All right. I think it's fine to move forward with the presentation unless any board members have any questions they want to ask at this time. You can ask after. We'll wait, we'll wait, we'll hear the remainder of the presentation. Thank you.
We'll be here, of course, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Mills from MDM. Thank you.
For the record, my name's Daniel Mills. I'm a principal traffic engineer with MDM Transportation Consultants. We prepared a traffic and parking assessment for the proposed sports complex. As you know, as it's been said tonight, it's located along Washington Street. Washington Street is Route 37. It's a state highway, state-owned and maintained roadway with access to the property via Braxton Street at the traffic light at that intersection. It's the main gateway to the development and also the Braintree Business Park. It's about a 350,000-square-foot business park that we're adjacent to. We, as part of our traffic assessment, we provided, we conducted traffic volume data collection at the gateway intersection. We reviewed parking activity during active soccer field weekend and afternoon time periods, when both Thayer Academy was using the fields, and then also the Braintree Recreation Soccer Leagues were using the fields. We also reviewed some of the traffic analyses and operations at the major, at the gateway intersection, as well as travel speeds and volume along Braxton Street. With regards to the increase in traffic, or the change in traffic, I should say, we reviewed both existing sites in the region, in Marlborough and Middleton, relative to a sports complex. And we also relied on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for sports complex. Provided comparison for both traffic volume increases and also parking generation for Because we are eliminating three fields, three outdoor fields, we do want to reduce the site traffic, the current site traffic by that volume. So we relied on the empirical data that we collected and Institute of Transportation Engineer database to identify the approximate amount of traffic that would be generated by three fields. As you can see in this first column here, we expect in the morning, really, there's not a lot of use of those fields. The current programming does not, and the fields themselves, and they're not really used during the morning. So we only, maybe some maintenance or other things that are going on, but relative to teams and workouts, they just don't exist in the morning. In the evening, we do have some school activity and possibly some leagues using those three fields. Our estimate is that there's about a 50 trip reduction by taking out those three fields. And on a Saturday, we estimate about 120 trip reduction by reducing the site from those, with those three fields. We are adding the interior, the indoor complex, which will have a turf field and also a one and a third ice rinks. Again, using some of the empirical data that we have for the other complexes in Marlborough and Middleton, we made some projections relative to the morning peak hour. Soccer league, I'm sorry, hockey leagues are known to have early morning practices in Thayer Academy as well. So we do see an increase in traffic with that use, approximately 90 vehicles during the morning peak hour. And again, it's just going to depend on the specific program of Thayer Academy. These volumes are really based on some of the trends in the industry. During the evening peak hour, again, we would see some use from the soccer leagues and in the indoor complex, as well as the hockey leagues. And then during the Saturday, again, we would see about 100 trips during the morning peak hour. So when we take the difference between the three, activity for the three fields that we're eliminating, and add the turf field and the ice rink, we see about a 90-vehicle trip increase in the morning, only about a 40- trip increase in the morning, only about a 44-trip vehicle increase in the evening, and actually a reduction on Saturday. We feel that lacrosse leagues or soccer leagues actually generate more traffic in the afternoon than what an indoor complex with a turf field and a hockey rink would generate. The traffic flow along Route 37 is generally northbound in the morning, heading towards Braintree Center and away from downtown in the afternoon. On the Saturday, it's generally split. We have about 800 vehicles in either direction. On a daily basis, Route 37 carries about, run around 20,000 vehicles per day. And during the peak hours, it generates, Route 37 carries approximately 2,000 vehicles a day. So there, we'll be adding, you know, less than 100 vehicles, probably on the order of average of 50 vehicles compared to 2,000 vehicles a day. On a level of service grading scale, the intersection operates at about level service D or better, and will continue to operate at level service D or better with the proposed sports complex. We reviewed the crash data for the intersection, Braxton Street at Washington Street. We only saw one recorded or one reported accident over a four-year period, so we don't believe there's any safety issue at this intersection currently. With regards to parking, again, we relied on the empirical data that we collected at the site during weekday evening and a Saturday morning, afternoon time period when there's lots of activity at the field, and a minimum two fields were being occupied. From that empirical data on a weekday evening, we noticed that there's about 106, well, let me back up a little bit. So we took that information and we extrapolated it out to three athletic spaces being occupied, the existing outdoor field and then the indoor turf field and the hockey rink when the project is built. Based on our empirical data, we expect approximately 162 vehicles will be parked on site at the peak time period during the evening peak hour. This would assume that there was back-to-back or overlapping matches such that as one team is, or actually, one match is being played on a field, the other one is coming in right behind them, and there's overlapping parking until the other team departs the site. We also reviewed the information for Saturday, and we expect there'll be about 200 vehicles parked on site on a Saturday. When we compare this to ITE parking generation data, we find that we're very much in line with that data. Comparing the evening peak hour to our empirical data, we see a slight increase of about 20 vehicles, but still under the 200-vehicle estimate. And on a Saturday, we're almost right in line with what the ITE data is. Our estimate is 198. ITE parking generation data is about 196. So if we look at just a round number, about 200 vehicles will be parked on site during peak times. With a supply of over 350 parking spaces, we feel that there's a very comfortable margin to handle any special events that may occur within the sports complex. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We'll turn it back over to Mr. DeVillas.
Thank you, Dan. So let me just close out at least a few notes that I was taking as I was listening. Couple of things to keep in mind. The gentleman, I think it was Mr. McComme, last time, I wanted to confirm with you guys. Right now, this is a nonprofit use. Thayer does use this. They're a non-taxable entity. We are a taxable entity. Not that that weighs in your decision, but I told you the last time we would check on that. So my anticipation is at some point, we're going to receive a tax bill from the town of Braintree for this use, and we'll deal with that when it comes. That was discussed at our last meeting. I think parking-wise, to be honest, if I had this kind of parking at other facilities, I'd be ecstatic. You have to keep in mind that I think the request to build only what we need is reasonable in that we have one rink. A lot of times when you see a large parking demand, you have two rinks, and what two rinks does is it introduces tournaments to your site. We are building and operating as an accessory use for Thayer. So our company entered into a long-term land lease with Thayer. We're going to develop this site for the rink for Thayer, and they're going to have preferred use time right up through about 7:00 in season at night. So the opportunity for us to have long-term tournaments and events really doesn't exist with a sheet and a third. Having said that, you know, 200-plus spaces is probably more than adequate. When we opened our first facility, which was a rink and a turf, we had 114 spaces. Wellesley, like I said, is 130,000 feet, two rinks, two pools, turf, and we have 330 spaces on that site. Essex has 230 spaces with 130,000 feet of space. So just keep that in mind when we're discussing the option to not build what we don't need. We still would design it, we'll still permit it, and if some magic reason that Thayer draws 500 people per game, more power to them, and we need it, we'll build it. Last thing, I want to talk a little bit about the timing. We're before you tonight. We'll be in front of the conservation and the zoning next month. Our goal is to, believe it or not, be in the ground March and occupied for this fall. So not that that weighs in on your decision of timing, but our goal is to have this operational for the school and for the town coming fall of '18 for play, for at least the rink complex. Turf can follow in after that because that's really not typically used until early December after Thanksgiving. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions or direct you to either Dan or Phil.
Yeah, whether you can do the public or you can do the board. All right. Since this is a public hearing, I guess I'll start with the public if anybody is here to speak in regards to this project. If you could, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself and ask away. I don't see anybody getting up, so I will move on to questions from the board. Member Downey, do you have any questions at this time that you'd like to ask?
I do. On the MDM part of it, in one of the submissions, you talk about the video-based vehicle detection system at the intersection not working. Is that right?
Correct.
And what plans do you have to address that? Because it looks like traffic's stopping on 37 for no reason, according to this.
Yep. So I actually spoke with the town engineer. He indicated that he's made some requests to the highway department to have that reviewed. On my site visit tonight, I did notice that there was, one of the issues has been resolved in that the green light will stay on Route 37 if there's no demand, if there's no car on Braxton Street. So that seems to have been fixed. I don't know, you know, if it was something that was just a glitch and it kind of worked itself out, or if that was something that was, there was a maintenance issue and they did resolve that.
Do you have any plans to address that further or follow up on that, or is that...
Again, it's something that we can follow up with the Mass Highway Department through the town engineer or directly through our contact with the district office. We can make that request to have that continue to be maintained.
Thank you. The other question I had was about table three in the comparable fields, the one in Middleton and Marlborough, and you built those as well, is that right? It looks like they're 72,000 square feet, and your proposal is for 88,000. Are those numbers correct?
I could tell you that Middleton, because we just opened it, is 129,000 feet.
Okay.
It is two full-size ice rinks, 25,000 feet of retail, and a 30,000-foot turf. So it's 50% larger than this, at least. Marlborough is an interesting site. It is eight rinks, and I think they're opening two more if they haven't already. And I would guess in the order of magnitude, the size of that building is eight acres alone just for the building, maybe 10?
The other point I wanted to ask about was, and it may be in here and I missed it. So right now, that facility is used, they're all outdoor fields, used from, you know, April till maybe November, but not much longer than that. But your proposal would make that site used pretty much year-round, throughout the day and into the evening. Do they have night facilities here? Do they have lights now, what they play? So do any of your, and I may have missed it in here, any of these tables address the impact because it's going to be year-round? There's going to be traffic year-round, not just the way it is currently?
Right. So the standard engineering practices to review the peak time periods, which generally fall between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, that's when you have the rush hour traffic, that's when you have the most load on the roadway system. So we focus all of our attention on those time periods. And on Saturday, it's usually between 11:00 and 2:00, which is what we've done in the document. We haven't explored outside of that. The traffic volume levels generally drop drastically, say after 7:00, which opens up a lot of capacity, and there's less impact on the through traffic on Route 37 during those time periods. There will be, quote, "impact," but it'll be far less than what it would occur at during the peak hours.
Nothing further at the moment.
Okay, great. Member Eng, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman. As far as your track record at other facilities, when you're scheduling events, how tight are they scheduled so that the overlapping of parking doesn't excessively demand more spaces than you're projecting?
That's an excellent question because so much of this is operational. For instance, what Wellesley, which we'll break ground on Friday, is, you know, we're not going to do pool events when we have turf, when we have hockey events, and we'll shut down the turf and use that as overflow. So a lot of it, you manage through that. Middleton, for instance, you know, our sheets are offset about 15 minutes, so you make a sheet of ice, a sheet 6:00. You'll make the next one at 6:10 to 6:15, and that gives the Zamboni guys enough time for it's about 8 to 10 minutes to make the sheet to go to the next one. What that does is, if any of your kids play hockey, you're going to get to the rink half hour, 45 minutes before your practice, and you're going to stay a half hour after. So really, the way we, so when we first started this long story 10 years ago, there wasn't anything in ITE about how to do this. So we kind of lunged it in terms of the parking and the financing, and, you know, we built our first facility in seven months, and we had a building permit a month before we opened because no one knew what to do. Now, I think we've got it down after doing this for 10 years to the point that we've, I think we've got it figured out, you know? We make sure that we have enough parking to accommodate that really one and a half trips. So you're coming in, you're going to stay a little bit later, some kids are going to get out, some kids are going to harpoon, some aren't. So there's that flush where you've got, you know, a 10-minute crazy time where that next team's coming on and that one team's coming off, and you might have to drive around the parking lot once, but you usually find a space. And here, with the amount of overflow we have, I think we're going to be very comfortable in that. A lot of our sites, you can't park. Wellesley, for instance, if you can't find a space on site, you can't park on Route 9. Here, you've got the overflow, you've got the parking that's dedicated for just the turf in the event that we had a huge tournament. And again, to Mr. Downey's question about the seasonality of it, yeah, we're going to be year-round, but when the turf that exists to remain is high-impact in the summertime, the rink is really going to be low-impact. And when we're high-impact this time of season, you know, there's only a few crazy people that are all playing soccer right now in this weather. The soccer guys will play year-round if you let them, but where you don't have lights, you're not going to have a lot of the high-impact. So September, it'll be a little bit busy, and realistically, March in the mud season with the athletic, with the field, it'll be a little bit busy. But parking-wise, I think we have such an over, I wish I was blessed with this much parking in other facilities.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is that we don't want cars parked on Route 37.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And I don't think it's going to be permitted, Melissa, right, on 37?
No, that would not.
Okay.
That would not.
So for instance, I have, they're aging out, but I have kids that have played up here in lacrosse tournaments and soccer tournaments, and even when these are three or four fields full-time, I don't think I've ever seen cars down Braxton Street. It takes a while to get out on some of those days because you've got such a high capacity. But if you think about it, hockey is a five-on-five sport. Soccer is 10-on-10, and you've got 10 kids waiting on each team, so it's a much less intense use at a hockey rink.
Right. Can somebody get up and talk about why you are calling those empirical numbers? Are those, because I don't think the audience understand what you mean by empirical. Can you explain that, please?
Sure. The empirical is just data that we've collected locally and use those rates, either trip rates or parking rates in our analysis as opposed to relying on a national database.
Okay. Because you're making a comparison with the empirical data to the ITE numbers, and they're pretty close.
Correct.
And so you're confident that because of the closeness, it's going to handle the amount of parking needed?
Yes. I mean, it gives us a very good comfort level relative to the parking, absolutely. And then, as Mr. DeVillas said, we're projecting about 200 spaces being occupied, and there's, you know, well over 300 being provided.
All right. Sir, will you get up there? Again, I'm going to ask you a pretty important question here. Who's going to control the use of this facility? You or Thayer?
Me.
You are?
I have a 50-year, my company has a 50-year land lease with Thayer, at which time they have in that lease preferred time that they can come in and rent it. But it's, for all intents and purposes, it's my facility. I will pay them rent, I will pay you taxes, and they will pay me to rent their time. It's their home rink on my dime. So if and when you guys have an issue with parking demands, you'll call me. You won't call Thayer.
Okay. Because the reason I'm asking is, this is not a money-losing venture for you. This is hopefully a money-making venture for you.
I enjoy what I do, but I don't come down here to lose money, correct?
Okay. So that's why I'm asking the question, is that, you know, the tightness of having the facility used may dictate the amount of parking needed on overlapping of events, and that's why I asked the first question. That's why I'm asking the second question, that, you know, you're not going to overlap the events so that we do have a parking problem.
No. So you've got to understand, my company makes money if I rent out the facility. If it sits idle, I don't make money. Having said that, I also can't produce another Saturday 12:00 sheet of ice. I only have one chance at filling that. So I can't overbook it or people aren't going to come back. And you sell these facilities to the parents, and if you have clean locker rooms, if you're well-run, people come back, and that goes to parking. If people come here and they can't park, they're not going to be happy with it, and they're not going to come back.
All right. I just want to make sure that it's going to operate successfully, and successful means it's going to be adequate parking and people are going to be happy with that. That's why I'm asking.
I appreciate that.
Okay. I have one question about storm water drainage.
Yes, sir.
The amount of storm water coming off the parking areas, are they going into a oil-water separator before they go to the outfall?
Yes. Yes. What we do is, they'll go through the catch basins, which have deep sumps and hoods. Then they're conveyed in closed drainage pipes. The first row of the chamber system is what's called an isolator row. So that separates out, that's the traditional oil and gas separator, water quality unit that you're familiar with. And then from there, it then goes through the chamber storage and then goes through the outfall.
Okay. What's the rate of maintenance on those sumps?
Yeah. So they're required under the ONM, they'll be inspected and cleaned at least once in the spring and once in the fall, typically to remove any accumulated sands from winter sanding, any leaves or debris.
Okay.
And that's specified in the operation and maintenance plan that runs with the order of conditions if issued by the CONCON.
Okay. And you're going to keep records of the maintenance of all the sumps and cleanliness of the parking areas and so forth?
Yes. Through recent years, I think you can imagine that historically, everybody agreed to lots of different things, and then as soon as the facility, or a facility was running, people sort of forget things. So most notably, current orders of conditions require that those records be kept on-site and made available to anybody who requests them. And in certain circumstances, we're required to provide them to the town on a frequency determined by either this board, the town engineer, or the conservation commissioner.
Okay. So if one of the conservation commissioners or one of the planning board members come down to the facility, you will give them access to any records that should be available for...
Right. The facility manager should maintain, you know, a binder on-site. I clean the catch basins on April 30th and September 30th, and you can request... and you can request those and inspect those as you see appropriate.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Member McComme, do you have any questions at this time?
Sure, thank you. So, for Mr. DeVellis, I appreciate, you know, this is going to be a taxable property. Would you please submit something for the public record which gives your initial estimate of what you think is going to be taxed? For example, is it just the rink? Is it the parking lot? Is it the whole facility? I think that would be good, you know, for us to kind of review. And along the same lines, since you're going to be responsible for the schedule, I think we'd like to see that as well. What's the proposed schedule? When is Thayer using it? When will it potentially be used with outside groups? What are going to be the rules associated with that? You know, so on and so forth. That's something I'm sure that, you know, public safety, in addition to the planning board and others, would be interested in. And again, if you could submit something formally for the public record, that would be great.
Sure. And if I can just give a quick answer?
Well, if you just submit it, that'd be great.
Yeah, the tax estimate, I can give my best. It's really going to be up to the assessors and how they assess.
Sure.
They can do it through income or valuation. The schedule, I'm happy to send over.
Yeah. But, you know, for example, are you going to control the parking lot? Is that, you know, that kind of stuff? So, that would be great. Another question is, when Thayer was considering the other facility in Campanelli, a couple issues came up related to public safety. And one of the things that we heard was that they were going to bus all their athletes over from the campus to the facility. So, I guess a question that I would ask generally is, what similar public safety measures are they going to, is Thayer going to use as the primary tenant, primary user? I don't know if that's been discussed or not, but that was something that came up during our last discussion. So, I'm going to throw that out there again.
Yeah. I, it's not in the lease, and it's not been discussed, but I can certainly give you a response with the other two items as how they'll deal with that.
Sure. Well, they brought it up.
Yep.
So, the other thing is that currently at the facility, at the site, there are some trailers and other buildings that were never permitted, and, you know, they've been there for a number of years. And I think that they were asked to be taken away or taken down by the town. So, I'm just concerned, you know, here you're coming to us and you're asking us to do something. You know, what are we actually going to get? You know, we were, we were told one thing before, and then additional things were built. So, you know, I'm just raising it as an issue in terms of credibility and, you know, what's going to happen here, you know?
Well, I can answer that really briefly, as I've been involved in this six months, other than watching my kids play here.
Right.
I don't know what was promised in the past. Quite frankly, it's irrelevant to my discussion because I don't know. I can tell you, we've talked to Melissa about this early on in the process. In redoing and restriping that parking lot, those will be removed. If they're used as construction trailers, they'll be moved down onto-site. Right now, I believe they're largely storage trailers.
Well, it doesn't matter. They weren't permitted, so.
Yeah, no, I, look, I agree. I'm telling you, in the future, those won't be there when we open this facility. This will be a lined parking lot.
That's kind of not my point. The point is, is that, you know, they were put up without, you know, asking and with no, you know, permits or whatever. And they were asked to be taken down, and they weren't, and they've persisted for a number of years. So, it just, you know, this is going to be a big project. You want it done correctly. We want to make sure that, as we've always done, try to have a good working relationship. But just kind of calls into question, what are we actually going to get?
Well, with all due respect, sir, it doesn't call into question anything with me. I can tell you, you can reach out to Bedford, Middleton, Worcester, and Wellesley, and you're not going to have an issue with what you ask of me and what I give you in return of what this facility is going to look like a year after operation. What's done in the past, quite frankly, there, whether it was permitted or not, I don't care. I mean, it won't be there when it's open. Thayer has been very decent to me in negotiations with this lease and my company. They're going to be an anchor tenant for us, that we're going to greatly hope that they thrive there, and they hope that we thrive. And part of that will be a good relationship with you guys.
Okay. So, you know, obviously, the special permit will outline all these things. And we take that very seriously. And I'm not trying to embarrass anybody, but you know, we have these situations all the time. And the only way to make sure that they don't come up is to bring them up, which is why I want to identify this. So, it's a concern, it's a concern, and I just want to be clear on that.
Look, I would absolutely welcome that in the conditions that that's removed. I've gone in, I've drafted conditions for boards to put in for towns to get preferred use in a special permit, whether it's a zoning permit in Bedford or a law that I wrote for the state legislature in Middleton. We put in that decision what you guys want. So, if those trailers aren't supposed to be there, and they're not going to be there once we open, absolutely, put it as number one in your condition.
Sure. Well, they might be in your way, but I'm not going to put that in the condition. I just, I just wanted to raise that.
Yep.
That's all I have for now, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of questions sprinkled throughout my notes, so I might bounce all around a little bit. But if you could just, real quickly, just, you had mentioned with regards to timing, you know, your schedule as far as an ideal schedule would be to begin construction in March and potentially occupy in this fall. Is the project itself phased as far as the tennis courts and the building itself? Like, is it all being built at once? Or are you going to build the indoor facility and parking and then phase anything else?
I guess that the construction management phase would go, you know, the field is essentially ripped up now. The fencing is in place around it. Our intent would go in there and rip out the subsurface, put down the foundation, put the steel frame in by the middle of June, July 1 at the latest, and start building interior. Parking lots would be finished up on our way out. The tennis courts are going to be built by Thayer. That's not in the leasehold area, but we showed them on the plan just so you could see what was going to be left there.
Okay.
So, when those get built, if we work with them on the building, we'll build those on our way as we back out of the site.
Okay. So, the infrastructure as far as the stormwater is concerned will be built by you, but will accommodate the tennis courts and everything? Okay.
Yeah, so, we, it's an important point. When Allen Majors figured out the detention, they included that the tennis courts in there, though we might not build them, Thayer might build them in conjunction with us. You know, that detail hasn't been worked out yet. But the site accommodates those the same way the stormwater accommodates the full parking, even though we hope not to build it all.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that you, that Edge will be the entity that operates the facility after construction? And Thayer will have the preferable use of the facility? Would there be a scenario where your facility would not be in use by Thayer? And what would, what would you, what would you be doing at that time with it?
So, my company, ESG Associates, owns the land lease. We'll build it, we'll own it, we'll own the financing on it. They're a tenant right now. Their preferred time in-season for their high school is roughly 6:00 to 7:30 in the morning, and then 3:00 to 6:50 at night. High school season starts the week before Thanksgiving, right up until how good your team is, how far they go in the playoffs. They have five or six teams. So, realistically, their season will be done, you know, once Belmont Hill beats them somewhere around March, early on March, because my kid plays at Belmont Hill. So, once they're out of it, we'll work with our own programs. We'll start our own programming in there. We'll have youth programs in there. We're going to rely on Braintree Youth Hockey to be in there. We're going to rely on Braintree Youth Soccer to be in there. So, they're a very small part. They're probably revenue-wise, a tenth of what we're going to sell in there. We'll deal with a lot of local programs. We've had a lot of interest from local programs who had hoped to be in Braintree by this time and that aren't yet, that want to be in this facility. So, we'll work with them, and Braintree Youth is a sizable program that we'll expect, will want a lot of this time.
Okay. And then what will the hours of operation be?
We typically have ice, on the ice, we rely on a 6:00 AM sheet, which opens the doors around 5:30 in-season. And the last sheet is usually 11:00 o'clock, which has people leaving the facility, probably around quarter past 12:00.
Okay. And is that seven days a week? What is that? Yep, seven days a week, okay. And then when we were looking at, I don't know, maybe you can answer this, or perhaps the traffic engineer can speak to this. In the report, it just mentions that you looked at the three different uses, the outside field, the indoor field, and the rink. And I was just curious, as far as from like a parking perspective, is each athletic use kind of divvied up the same way? Or are there different parking demands for, say, the hockey use versus the indoor field use versus the outdoor field use?
I'll let Matt jump in on that, but just because I'm not an engineer, I'll throw my two cents in anyway. Hockey, again, hockey's five-on-five, and you've got 10 people on the bench. So, it's, you know, it's a 15-on-15 sport. Soccer's crazy. Soccer, you know, the existing three fields out there right now, if you have 100 kids on that field, I wouldn't be surprised. If you have 100 kids on the ice, I'd be shocked just because the hockey rink is 85 by 200, and a turf field, outdoor turf field is, you know, double that as far as the actual numbers to go.
Yeah, I would agree. The soccer's more intense, especially when you have some of the overlapping traffic facted into it as well with the number of players on each team. So, you know, that's really what we based it on, was a conservative soccer estimate as opposed to each specific athletic space.
Okay, so, when you have the three athletic spaces, you have a general number of spaces required for one athletic space, and then you just multiply it by three? But the one athletic space is the most conservative, being a soccer use essentially?
Correct. Yeah, there's limited hockey rink statistics, you know, just in general, but nationally as well, so.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious about that. I do have a couple of questions on storm water, if Phil would like to get back up.
Sure. Go right ahead.
I haven't spent a ton of time looking at the calculations, but I just had a couple of initial questions on existing conditions and proposed conditions. So, when you're modeling the existing fields, how did you treat those in your model? Did you just model them as a grass surface, or how did you handle that condition?
Sure. Stay with me for a moment. Let me flip back to the plan, okay? We did not model them as grass because they're not grass. They don't act the same way grass does. The athletic fields have membranes underneath them that restrict the flow of water going vertically, which is also the reason why there are perimeter drains around them that drain over to the detention basin. So, we don't, so the direct answer to your question is, they're not modeled as grass. They're also not modeled as a parking lot, which is true and pervious. It's a middle ground between the two because there is some water that can get through, which is not as free-flow. So, it's a very restrictive model. I think the curve number is somewhere in the low 80s. And for frame of reference, curve number for a parking lot in a building is 98. Curve number for grass, good grass that can perk water through is 30 to 40. So, that's how we approached it. And that's also substantiated by, you know, record documents for the sports fields themselves and the orders of conditions through the conservation commission, which also is what necessitated a detention basin. Because if you go way back to when the fields were constructed, whatever its natural condition was, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with it, if it were a wooded area, that has a relatively high infiltrative rate, and then you're blocking off that infiltrative capacity with the fields. And it's in that delta from one to the other that you have to hold back the water, which created the stormwater basin. We're taking that obviously a step further, which is why we're supplementing this basin with the various subsurface fields that you see on the plan as presented.
Okay, so the fields themselves, when, and just out of curiosity, I guess, the fields themselves when built because of the liner, they do not have much infiltrative capacity? Is that correct?
Correct. Because what you're looking for on a sports field, and I'm pretending to be a sports expert, I'm not, there are dedicated engineers to do it. What you're looking for is stability of sub-base, so the field over time does not roll and sink. It needs to remain flat. So, in order to achieve that, they need to control the subsurface material, and that's how they do it with a compacted gravel line, a compacted gravel base, and then liners to restrict the upheaval action of freeze-thaw cycles.
Okay.
So, it's not as infiltrative as a park, if you will, you know, that kids just can play on the grass.
Okay. So, for your existing model, the subcatchments that had the existing fields, and you used a modified curve number?
That is correct.
Sounds like based on experience or, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, what we did is, you know, in order for me to accurately model this, I actually consulted with a peer engineer that I do work with, who exclusively does sports fields. And I said, you know, let's talk about the right way to model these conditions. And that's the approach we took. But again, it was also substantiated by the record documentation because when the fields were permitted, when the fields were designed and permitted, those same calculations need to pass muster here through the town, and they were in keeping with that information.
Okay. And as far as your proposed design, obviously, now you're going to have some infiltration fields kind of on either side of the building. What kind of soils are you anticipating as the native soils? Was there soil testing done originally before the fields were there? Have you done soil testing to date? What's kind of the game plan for that?
Sure. So, good questions. Some soil testing was done when the fields were put into place. We are seeking to do additional testing. But what we requested in our various permit applications through both this board and CONCOM was to defer the testing to a period where the fields could then be effectively destroyed, that we can cut into them. We didn't want to destroy the fields doing subsurface testing to confirm some design assumptions. So, we haven't done the testing that we want to do here, but we will do the testing to confirm what we've designed. What we're anticipating, to answer your question more completely, based on records, we have a lens of really good perking soil that basically straddles the southerly side of the building, and then some tighter soils along the northerly side. They're rated, if you're familiar with the stormwater regulations, they're rated from A to D, A being the most permeable, think about it as sand, and D being the most restrictive, think about it as silt and clay. The lower half is an A, the upper half is a B slash C. So, we're able to, we're able to use that information to design these fields. So, when we design these fields, we design them for the slower percolation rate, which is the B slash C. So, if we get into a really good lens of A, then it actually is better for us. It's a more conservative approach to the design.
So, are all the fields, are all of the storm tech fields designed as infiltration fields?
No, not completely. Because what would, it's expensive to have the entirety of the field as infiltration. So, as I mentioned, it's a three-pronged approach in each of these subsurface fields. Is one portion of the chamber is for treatment. The next section is for infiltration, and then the third piece is for just straight retention of the storm water.
Okay. Okay. You did mention, and the plans have the MWR easement. Is there additional permitting that you're doing because of proximity to that?
We'll have to file what's called an 8M permit, which is a proximity permit.
Yeah, I'm familiar.
Yeah. But what we tried to, we don't engage them until we've established at the local level. Otherwise, we're wasting their time.
Sure. Now, are there sidewalks on Washington down Braxton that would connect to your site and your building?
Yes.
Yeah. Want to talk about that?
Yeah, only because I was there tonight. Coming down Braxton to Washington, the sidewalk runs along the left-hand side tying into Washington.
Okay. And is that maintained then all the way into the site, to the front of the building, that sidewalk?
Yeah. It comes up, right now, it comes up the east side of Braxton, but we'll bring, there'll be access in through the parking lot to the site. So, if someone wants to walk here with their hockey bag.
They would be walking in the parking lot?
They'd walk through the parking lot.
That like little turn-off parking lot, okay. Okay. Thank you. I think that was very, very helpful. Yes, Member McComme, go ahead.
Maybe for Mr. Cadira. I forgot to ask you, I know that the fire department submitted a letter and that they wanted access during construction as well as obviously wanted access during construction, as well as obviously post-construction, and that, you know, it's difficult to look, at least from me, the turning radius within the facility of the parking lot, and I know, so I'm just gonna assume that those have all been considered, they're 20-foot with access, so on, so forth.
Yeah, so we haven't seen a letter from the fire department yet.
Okay.
You know, so we'll get our hands on that. But what we'll do is we'll work with them. It is designed to accommodate that circulation that you're referring to.
Okay, because when you said it was a one-way, my only question was getting out, you know, it looks like they're going through the parking lot then.
Yeah, well, yes. So, you know, circulation is down through, keeping, this entirety is all two-way. The one-way is from here through here, just to promote the drop-off zone, and then it's two-way everywhere else. But yes, the exit is along the back drive aisle below the parking spaces, so it is a dedicated circulation lane. But we can, you know, to verify that information, we have no problem providing a circulation plan, just for record, to show that it complies.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Matt.
Does anybody else have any, any board members have anything else they want to add? If I could just ask, maybe, oh, oh, yeah, of course. Just want to speak into the mic and introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening. Bill Needham, resident. First of all, is this the same property that Flatley gave Thayer, because he couldn't build on it? Is anybody on the board aware of that?
This was donated, I believe, by Flatley.
Because he couldn't build on it?
That I don't, I can't confirm.
I think that's the case. Tom Flatley would do anything like that. Second of all, operations of night, you said, 6:00 in the morning, and then you're gonna make ice at 6:00 o'clock, and they'll probably be there at midnight? You're gonna have to put a cap on the hours, because you'll be making money. But there's a lot of adults that skate in the middle of the night. People on Peach Street are already being bothered by all kinds of traffic, and that's a typical lead-in to Braxton. Did the residents have to be noticed, notified that this, is this the same thing that was gonna go up in Camp and Ellie Drive, that Thayer was putting up the two penthouses on the two roof?
Mr. Chairman, if I can address some of those issues?
Sure.
Mr. Needham, this, the butters were notified. There was a certified butters list project, brought out by the applicant, and the applicants were notified. It also ran two consecutive weeks in the legal notices in the Patriot ledger. We do also post our agendas online for the public to see. So I think we have addressed the issue of notification. As to your question about Mr. Flatley's property, Mr. Flatley made some donations, two donations in fact, and the other property that he donated that he couldn't build upon is back around the corner, more towards the old, I think it was Carl Walworth's.
The Walworth's?
Yes.
Elf Company, yeah.
So I think that's the one you're relating to, that he could not build upon. And that has been deeded conservation land, and there's a restriction that it can't be built upon.
I know, I know when Thayer, did Thayer appear before town meeting, or was it after that?
The gift from Mr. Flatley to the town on the unbuildable piece was done since Mayor Sullivan has been.
Okay, yeah.
It was originally gifted to the downtown, but it was not done properly, and so we had to go through a process to accept it.
Okay, well, I live on Peach Street, just a few up. I never got any certification that this was going on. I don't know if that's within the zone of it.
Yeah, actually, I had looked at the butters list. 300 feet doesn't reach all the way up to Peach Street.
All right.
So, we do notify, I think we caught the corner, and that was about it.
Okay, because there's people that live on the, as we know, I don't, you must know by now, there's people that do live on the corner of Braxton there.
Mm-hmm.
Braxton and Washington Street.
They have Washington Street addresses, and those were there. I would also encourage you to come in and take a look at the certified butters list. If there's some concern as to who was notified, it's a public.
Well, if I was outside, I won't debate it with you. I know you do, you do your job. But what I am concerned with is this nonsense of midnight. I think there should be nothing going up, you gotta restrict the hours. The people on Peach Street, right now, I have some stuff coming up, which has nothing to do with this, but has to put the South Street and trucking and all that, so it's not gonna be heard here. But you definitely have to restrict the hours. This midnight crap, it just, it just doesn't buy it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If I may ask staff, I'm not sure which, if it's you or Christine who's working on this, but if you could just kind of give us an update with where we're at?
If I may, Madam Chair. We've done some preliminary review. We haven't issued a staff report yet. What I hoped on planning on doing before this meeting, but was tied up with some other matters for the town, was to sit down with Mr. DeVellis and his group from MDM and Allen and Majors, and also Bob Campbell, myself, and the folks from Water and Sewer, Fire, and Police, if they would like to join us, to kind of go through some things that may be potential issues, and flush those out, and get that to the pen, to the paper. We have received comments from a few of the departments, and as the civil engineer had discussed, this was heard at Conservation last month, and they did have a concern about removing that rap slope and replacing it with the retaining wall. And one of the things that we're going to be looking at diligently, a variety of information, both ITE-generated parking and traffic analysis has been provided, as well as empirical data from similar facilities. And what we're going to do is sit down and kind of go through the actual raw numbers ourselves, so we can get a look at those and see if we notice any things that we should be concerned in. And we will go with the most conservative number, which would be the worst-case scenario for both parking and traffic, and that's the level that will sort of make sure this project meets those standards. The question in the comment about the reserve parking is a very valid one. This board has used that tool in the past. I think the days of over-parking, things are over, and I would hope that whatever the numbers result in, if there is an opportunity to put some spaces in reserve, that we in fact can do something like that. We've done it on several sites and have yet to experience one site where we've actually had a problem. And again, that will be based, if we do go that route on the reserve, that will be based on, again, the worst-case parking scenario and the most conservative numbers, with some leeway and buffer in there as well, both for the traffic and the parking. The comments about the drainage, it's a pretty straightforward system. It sounded pretty complicated, but very in line with a lot of the systems that this board reviews fairly consistently, probably one or two every month, in fact. And then also the suggestion that we had looked at the plans for the discharge point and had talked to Mr. Cudero about just discharging it to that existing basin. It was sort of created for the fields and that scenario, and I think you can see, based on the upstream design of that basin, that the additional infiltration systems and subsurface systems provided is what's in fact covering that gap. So between what's being provided and the basin, we'll make sure that that is, again, conservative and more than enough to cover any situations that may occur here from a stormwater standpoint. So that's really sort of the update from the staff. We haven't really drawn any conclusions yet. We really don't have any negative comments, just pointing out that Mr. DeVellis and his team have been forthcoming with information. I did ask them to provide the materials to the board this evening. They own and operate a bunch of different facilities. As always, we tend to sometimes visit some of those facilities, call some of those facilities, reach out to the towns and so forth to get an idea of some of the materials. Mr. DeVellis has given us names and phone numbers of people to call, and various town officials, if we'd like to reach out to them and ask them any questions. So it's welcoming that they're open about their information, and they've provided example and opportunity that we can follow up with other professionals and sort of, I guess, check on their credentials, if I say it in that manner. So my goal is to try to set something up in the next two weeks, get everybody in the same room, hash out any issues, talk to the conservation staff, Kelly, that works in our office, and sort of balance the needs and the goals, the drainage goals and the parking goals, and making sure that, and any recommendations that we put forward to the board, as always, conservative, including buffers, and hopeful that, you know, we can work towards something that's amenable.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a question from Melissa, please. Melissa, on Mr. Needham's questions about the hours of operation, is there a town bylaw that restricts a facility like this to operate, let's say, beyond midnight?
I don't believe so. I believe the only prohibition we have, and someone jump in if I'm wrong, is on gas stations. I think there was something in the general ordinance that says that they could not be open 24 hours. We might have a couple that are grandfathered, but I don't believe there are any other hour of operation restrictions. I can obviously double-check those in any of the town regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add to that, we had a special permit with the brewery on Wood Road, in which they came in and the hours were set for that through the special permit. So I would suggest to you, there is that capability to do that.
Yeah. Just for information, there's not gonna be a concession stand or a snack bar or anything that would serve refreshments that would keep people there later than normal?
No, typically we'll have a, we will have a concession. It'll be, a facility like this where it's off the road and it's, it doesn't have the visibility, we're not gonna have a dedicated strength training, physical therapy tenants. We'll have a rink-run facility that sells coffee, hot chocolate, breakfast sandwiches, skate sharpening, laces, mouth guards, but that was typically shut down in the evenings for us. Those shut down around 8:00. The high schools, right now, occupy your time up until about 7:00, youth until about 9:00, and it's really the adult leagues that come in after hours. They don't really do much. They skate, they hop in the shower, and they leave. We don't, we're not requesting alcohol licenses here or anything of that. So we don't, we don't want people to stay any later than they need. For us, it's the ability to make the ice, police the facility, clear the locker rooms out, and get our employees out of there.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be continuing?
Yes. So as far as the continuance, obviously, the next meeting is January 9th. Just for the sharing of information, Member Ng will not be present at January 9th meeting. He can, however, watch the tapes, and we have invoked here in the community the Mullen Rule, but how many people, Bob will use the Mullen Rule?
Each member is allowed one.
One time, okay.
Per application. So if Mr. Ng or Mr. Harnes is absent more than once, they wouldn't be able to participate.
Okay. Okay. So would you like to come in January, or would you like to come on February 13?
January would be great.
January, awesome. So the staff would recommend, excuse me, January 9th at 7:15?
Right. Chair, entertain a motion to continue this matter until January 9th at 7:15. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have been texting with the chairman to find out the status of his meeting. He is still involved in that meeting. He has told us to go forward. He's aware of the situation with Mr. Ng, but he can't provide any time that he's expected to arrive.
Okay. So you can't, you can't vote. I'm sorry, I didn't hear any of that.
I was explaining to the members that Chairman Harnes has been held up. He has no expected time of arrival.
Okay.
He suggests that we move forward. Mr. Ng can't participate, but it is a grading permit and be a majority of the board for the next item. So it would be, the applicant would have to attain three of three.
Mr. Levin, can you please approach? I know, I was in court all day yesterday, I'm like, strike that. So we're just going over, we've received telecommunications from Mr. Harnes. He was delayed at the other hearing, he needed to attend. It's 9:20. He's not sure when he's going to arrive. The matter requires a simple majority, three members. No?
No, no, which I, I would like to continue the matter.
Okay. So based on Attorney Levin's request due to Mr. Harnes's absence, and they would like to have the matter heard by four members, staff would recommend that that hearing be continued to January 9th.
If you said they requested the full board to be there?
No, Member Ng already can't participate. He already missed. So they want four.
I already missed a meeting, so I can't vote.
Yeah, he's already out.
He wouldn't be able to participate tonight or on January 9th. So the, I think Attorney Levin would like to have the fourth member, Chairman Harnes here on the 9th, to move forward, is what I.
I'd say you go to the podium, please.
Be respectful, respecting everybody's time, and we just want to make sure if we are here on January 9th, that the folks that they request to be here, that can be here. I just heard earlier that you were gonna be not present, and I didn't know if, with you not present, if that still constituted a full voting board. I'm just confused.
Sir, I'm already in a position where I can't vote anyway.
Okay.
Basically, the applicant has requesting, at this time, he would only have three members that could vote tonight. Member Ng is already on, cannot vote because he's missed a meeting. So the applicant would like to wait for Chairman Harnes to also be here, because then he would then have four voting members. So January would be an opportunity for him to have four voting members.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep. So Chair, entertain a motion to continue the application at 36 Bramblewood Lane to the January 9th meeting at 7:15.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Attorney Levin will need to sign the extension?
Yep, he already signed it.
Okay. So I think our agenda has been finished. The board wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.